Right, Mr. Gann, while we are conducting town business using remote participation by Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment to please mute your microphone.
Thank you. Debbie, is Kevin in the office there?
I'm, well, I'm at home, but he had to run Stewart School, and if he's not on yet, I'm assuming he might be a few minutes late.
Okay, let's see, we do not have Heidi Gaffney on either. Our first item is the Perkins Landing, 57 Perkins Row, so maybe we perhaps can move on.
He just, Lynn, he's jumping on now.
Okay.
Yes, I better put my... Yes, we don't need video. You want video?
Okay.
I'm sorry. Do you want videos?
He's, he's holding up some pretty valuable talent here.
Do you want your video up here? I have, I have to open the video for you.
No. Oh, and Bill, just to let you know, you're not on mute, so we can hear you. Hi, Kevin. All right, so we're turning it over to you to give us some background on the Perkins Landing, the recent development. It does not look like we have our conservation administrator.
You're muted.
Yep. No, I'm just going to give a very brief update for the board, just as there's been a couple of meetings that have happened in the last week and this meeting coming up, so, and this being a pretty high-profile project. And I just want to say my apologies today for my voice. I think the meetings are starting to catch up with me, my talking here in the office, because it's probably a good thing. By the end of today, they'll probably won't be talking anymore and people don't have to listen to me. But it started to go on me, but last week, the ConCon met in regards to 57 Perkins Row, Perkins Landing Project, and that meeting on the agenda was for the determination from our ConCon agent Heidi Gaffney, who's been working very closely with Donna Rich, who's working with behalf of the ZBA, and myself giving tabs on the project. There was a request made by the abutting neighbors for determination on the setbacks. The applicant for the project submitted an application with a drawing that was not stamped and had, from seven years ago, and had a line drawn on that map for where they believe the wetland delineation was. And subsequently, that's what they've been working off of. By the neighbors requesting a determination, which they have the rights to do, Heidi reached out, got approval from the developer, the landowner, to go on to the property and determine where the line would be, or confirmed, I should say, where the line should be based on the neighbors' engineering efforts that were made. I know up on Board Docs you'll find, excuse me, you'll find up on Board Docs a couple of different maps. One is the map showing the single-family home that exists, and then a second is the map showing the proposed development as it is now. And you can see on the highlighted line, the yellow line, that is the new determined line for where the wetland setbacks are. There's also a line that's between the river and that as well. In essence, anything within 100 feet of the, of the, of the wetland, that is, you cannot disturb that area. The second 100 feet, you can develop roughly 10% of it. And then anything beyond that is, is beyond the limitations. And so, as you can see, obviously, there's some impacts to the proposed project. We're not sure what next steps the applicant will take. And they were, by 5:00 yesterday, supposed to submit certain information that the ZBA requested for their meeting next week on Tuesday, which we did not receive by that deadline. And so, Tuesday, there is a ZBA meeting. I'm not sure. It's a good chance it'll get continued. So I just wanted everyone to be aware that there's some, certain things that have happened recently in the last week that are significant and could impact the project. And that the next step is we'll go back to the ZBA, and the applicant will have to, is required to submit certain information that they were previously asked to submit that are outside of delineation, the wetland delineation determination.
Any questions for Kevin?
The issue is, it certainly looks as though the applicant would have to submit a revised plan based on these, this data that was provided, so it will have that impact. What he will come back with is unknown, and it could take a good bit of time, but that's where we are.
Well, to Dick's point about a good amount of time, you know, is this open-ended? I thought there was, I thought there was sort of a cutoff date, and it seems they continue with the continuances, and they don't do their paperwork. I understand they're not going to be subpoenaed, but I mean, at what point do we not, can they not kick the can any further?
Well, we have gotten approvals from the applicant because he has not provided certain information up to this point that we've been looking for, and the applicant has agreed to extend the date. Instead of 180 days from the time he filed, it's now out to July. And with this, I assume there'll be another extension, but it will take him some time. The idea is he, he has to redesign his, his application that he submitted. So that's a big deal if he goes through that. Now, whether there's any kind of an appeal that will be attempted of some sort on the delineations, sometimes you get into that. But as it is now, with the data that we have, it would have to have some change because, as you pointed out, Kevin, some of the, that line provides a fact that some of the units that were recommended are within the area that he can't build. He could simply say, "I'm not going to build those if the rest of the roads and everything else are okay," but he may not want to keep it that way. It's up to him. But the extensions have to be, beyond 180 days would have, from the original filing, have to be agreed to by the applicant. If they're not, then we would close the hearing and make a decision. And in that case, without the information, the decision would have to be a negative one because they didn't have the information to make a decision. So that's why the applicant is very interested in extending it if he hasn't provided the information.
Thanks.
And as Kevin mentioned, the meeting is next Tuesday at 7:00, if anybody is interested in tuning in to hear next steps. All right, Kevin.
Excuse me, Lynn, just a moment. It also appears that if you, if you take a good, close look at the delineation line that shows on, on the map, there's a number of buildings that are within that zone, and it could become an economic issue. So like Dick said, he's probably, he may have to resign the whole subdivision to see what he can do with it.
All right, Kevin, moving along to the Verizon contract renewal, if you could give us an update. I know that the contract went up not too long ago, so the board probably did not have a chance to go through the 34-page document, but if you could give us kind of a summary of what is in this contract that's different than our existing contract and how that relates to the, the contract that we just signed with Comcast.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm going to give a quick outline, and then what I'd like to do is hand it over to Mr. Whiting, Bill Whiting, who's the Chair of the Cable Advisory Committee, to provide some additional details and to obviously answer questions. Just from a timeline standpoint, after we finished the Comcast contract, we moved to the Verizon contract negotiations. It was around the holidays. Verizon had some complications with timing and scheduling. We did meet with them at a kickoff meeting. We subsequently provided them with the terms that we agreed to with Comcast. There is a provision in both contracts that if either contract is negotiated in better terms, there's a clause that reopens the contract for the other vendor to then get the same more advantageous terms that we provided. So the fact that we just closed Comcast, it's timely, and we can move over to the Verizon and basically give them the exact deal that we agreed to, which was the 18,000 annual lien capital and a 2.5% gross receipts contribution back to the town. We've had a subsequent conversation with Verizon a week and a half ago in which we, we received the Verizon template. They have a very stock, it's a stock contract that they use for each community. We, Bill Hewig and Bill Whiting have inserted into that document the terms that are, the same terms we agreed to with Comcast. Verizon is now taking that, and they've shared it with their, they're going through their finance team to review and approve the terms that we proposed. Right now, what's available is, in talking with Bill Hewig from KP Law, is the, is the contract. If they agree to the terms that we agreed to with Comcast, it should not change. If there's any further negotiation, it would be likely not significant. And so, in order to give the board, because this is something time-sensitive, we want to give the board tonight an opportunity to have the contract and start reviewing it, so we don't miss any, we can move through the process quickly and also, again, answer any questions before you start to review it so you can look for certain things that might be of interest to you. So I'll stop talking because, again, Mr. Whiting's here to share some more of, of what we've been up to and where we're at in next steps.
Could I just ask, though, just to confirm, what we have on Board Docs is what you call, I guess, a boilerplate or a standard template one? Okay, so it's hardly, it's going to be changed a bunch, then?
Talking with Bill Hewig, and Bill Whiting could probably comment as well, but talking with Bill Hewig from KP, before we posted this onto Board Docs, I asked what changes he would anticipate on the contract for Topsfield, and he said likely very little, if anything.
Okay.
All right, well, welcome, Bill. Well, we look forward to your presentation, and then we'll probably have some questions for you.
Okay. We've only received one version of the license from Verizon. This time with Comcast, we had about seven or eight of them floating around. The reason basically is that Verizon is in a very different position than Comcast. And this is something that we sort of pulled out of the lawyer as he started thinking, "Why is Verizon so difficult to work with?" Basically, it's our way or the highway. This is a draft that we use everywhere. We're not going to change it. We're not going to give you a detailed table of contents, and if you don't like it, you know, it's sort of too tough. And the reason, frankly, and I should have realized this with my 75 years in the Bell system, Verizon is a telephone company. Therefore, it can provide telephone service and internet service without a license from us for cable. So if they chose not to offer cable, and they've done that in some cities, I believe Beverly does not have Verizon as a cable provider. So Verizon basically can do what it wants to because of its position as a telecommunications industry. Comcast needs a license to provide any one of those three. So if we withheld or denied the license for Comcast, they would have to bail out of not only cable TV, but telephone service and broadband service. And that was something somehow the lawyer had never really thought through. And after being fairly obnoxious about it, that was the reaction we got. So that helps. But it remains, they're not really very concerned about it. So we have one contract. It's blank in three spaces. One is the effective date of the contract, which obviously is there until we get it. The other is they've not filled in the PEG grant, which is a 2.5, and they're not filled in the capital, which is 18,000. So all the rest of the gobbledygook of 57 pages or whatever is their standard. I had Raphael McDonald, who's great doing this type of thing, Dick. I believe he's your protege in learning how to proofread and identify every possible issue. So Raphael has gone through that as a proof document, knowing that we're not really going to change any of the content as it relates to any material information. And we've provided that back to Verizon with a few typos and a few spaces and a few other things, but nothing of significance. So we're still waiting for Verizon's decision. Verizon has centralized this into their New York office. So in New York, they deal with every contract across the nation, and they're somewhat tied up. So we really, at this point, are assuming the 2.5% of gross revenue will be ours, but we really have no idea about the 18,000. And as Kevin stated, if they come back and say, "Well, you're really asking for too much" based upon the capital per subscriber in Topsfield, that's considerably higher than the other communities in Massachusetts where we've given them money. So if they hold firm on that, then with the level playing field write-up that Kev explained, if they will only accept 15,000, we'll have to go back and renegotiate the Comcast label and take 3,000 out of it. So we're sitting here, we've done everything we can, we've provided all the input on their document. The only thing that we have asked for is exactly what we asked for with Comcast, the same cable, capital dollars, the same PEG dollars, the same second cable video channel, that video channel being high-definition. You should know that the two contracts have different dates for that second channel, and we would have to coordinate that because I'm assuming we would want both Comcast and Verizon subscribers to have access to a second channel and to a high-def channel at the same time, rather than one three months after the other. So basically, that's all there is. There's very little negotiating going on, no paper flying back and forth, and we're just waiting for New York to make up its decision on 18,000. If they give it to us, as far as I know, we're done. What you're seeing on the Docs system is that very first draft that they're not going to change. They have not input Raphael's very minor changes, but they're not material. So that will be exactly what we're signing. So I can try to respond to any other questions.
Now, when does this contract expire, the current one?
It has, two months ago.
It's December. The December.
And so if this gets signed...
And the Comcast one was two or three months late. I'm sorry?
Okay, if this one gets signed, then do they retroactive any of the monies? Or they pick up from that effective date whenever we sign?
That's a little bit open. Right now, I'm trying to go back and analyze the Comcast contract. I am a Comcast customer, so I have bills for the last three years. What makes it very difficult, because remember, we said we're really interested in the end user, and we want to provide, protect our customers and all that. It makes it difficult because Comcast on January 1 had a major rate increase. So everything across the board increased. So their, their revenue would increase, so it's hard to tell what the base was that they applied their percent to. So we're working some of that through. What is a little different between Comcast and Verizon, and this, again, seemed to be a bit of a surprise to our lawyer, I pointed out that Verizon has a third line on the bill that impacts the customer's service that we have some jurisdiction over, and that's called a license charge. And the license charge is a provision, I think at the national level, certainly at the state level, where Comcast and Verizon pays the town 50 cents per customer per year. They also pay a fixed amount to the state on our behalf. So I noticed that on the Verizon bills that I've been looking at, the sample bills, there's a third line between PEG and capital of license fee of 11 cents. When I looked at Comcast, they apparently have applied, this is new, Kevin, I don't know that you're aware of this. They have started applying a license fee as a third line on the customer's bill as of the first of the year. There was no indication of that in their rate increase definition. And for some reason, they're charging 23 cents, and the two basically should be the same. So other, there are some issues. We're trying to analyze it, but I don't honestly know, Lynn. It seems to be up to them when they want to apply the rates, the new rates. And I'm still analyzing to see how does that reflect the money that they send to us.
In the old contract, Bill, what was the capital amount that they gave us? Is 18,000 that different?
No, 18,000 is, that's what was negotiated. That's a 10-year contract. You realize that Comcast, that Verizon is a five-year contract. And I mentioned the fact that they have more flexibility. It could well be, because now in the Verizon, in the Verizon contract, they have a provision that they can pull the plug on their five-year license. With certain provisions letting us know 60 days or something in advance, they could walk out of providing cable service. That's their right. And, you know, they have the personality, or the, the strategy may be what they want to do. They might want to move to a streaming service, or they want to do something else. They also may want not to renew their five-year license. So if they have a different game plan than the existing cable delivery, then they have the right, I doubt they do it, they could pull out within the five years, and that would cut the revenue to us, and they could well not renew for a second term, and that would cut the revenue to us.
Okay, so this is kind of a waiting game, then, at this point?
And we, we have no rocks to throw that I can find.
Where would the revenue amounts be put in the contract? Would it be an attachment?
No, there is a section for it because it talks about everything. All the words are there except there is no word that says 2.5 or 2% or 18,000. That's just one blank.
It's in the section that's license fee that does have that 50 cents in it? Is that the section?
No, those are in three sections, separate areas.
It's a different one, okay. I missed that.
Yeah, one of the things you'll find difficult, I think, and we were trying to get it, the table of contents is at extremely high level. So it's very hard to compare Comcast and Verizon because they have a different numbering structure and all the rest of that. But what you see is what you'll get. That's up there now.
Bill, you figure when they come back with whatever dollar value they're going to for the capital, that's it. They're not going to be amenable to any further discussion back and forth. That's the number.
Nope. You know, basically the same thing about the senior discount. We don't do that. So right now, we have a senior discount, which is not much of a bargain. There are very, very few people in town who would qualify for it, but it's in a side letter, not the Comcast license. And we will not have one for Verizon. So we have to sort of work out what do we do.
Well, well, we, we own, I'm sorry, Dick, go ahead.
I was just going to say that we are open to losing a bunch of money here if this thing doesn't get resolved and they choose not to back, backfill the time before the contract, the agreement was signed. The only thing we do, do have, and we coincidentally got it about a week ago, was the 50 cents on each of the people, some $450.
Right.
We could lose some if we're not getting the monthly amounts.
Well, you see, the effective date changes. So the current date that we missed was December. The effective date will be April or whatever, by the time we get signing it. So the new rates don't apply on the old schedule. So we're not losing money, if you will, between December and April because April will push it forward 10 years. There's some question about, I'm assuming that they would continue to pay us whatever they owe us. But you, you may not know, and I don't want to get too well into the weeds here. With Verizon, we're dealing with a 15-year contract. It gave us a bunch of money 15 years ago. We got it in four different lumps. We've received no revenue from Verizon in the last four or five years, other than the 50 cents a customer, because we received lump sums through the first 10 or 12 years of the license. So from a cash flow point of view, there's been no cash coming in from Verizon since the last package payment of at least four years ago.
So, Bill, if they don't agree to that amount, say they say zero in capital, so we've lost the capital from them, we have to go back to Comcast and reduce that capital. Do we need to do anything, consider anything in this budget cycle?
No, I, I'll, Bill, Mr. Whiting, I'll take this one, just, we're not very separate. I'll just start by saying, there's no intention to go back to Comcast. And when we, last meeting we had with Verizon, they kind of started humming and hawing how high of a capital number. We purposely with the Comcast pushed on the capital because it's a long-term deal. And historical trend, customer usage is going down, not up. So we'll have a better fixed amount that we can rely on. So Comcast agreed to it. When we went to Verizon, their first thing they said to Mr. Whiting's point, "This is a very high capital number." And I said, "Yeah, but our percentage is lower." And I, they offered a 15% premium on the capital at one point, and I said, that's good, which would go right back into the consumer, into the pockets of our customers, our residents, that they'd have to pay back. And we said, "If you can get us at 18, we'll, we'll elect not to take the 15% premium." And the reason they gave us the premium is because they're a five-year deal, not a 10-year deal. And when that came up, and I told them that, Bill Hewig said to the Verizon rep, "I told you they're good to work with," and the rep said, "Yeah, we'll put it through. We'll see, we'll try to get through to the finance." So it was encouraging at the end of the negotiation session that we had at the last meeting last week. From the beginning to the end, I think we made some really good progress getting that 18 to, to move it forward internally for them. And I don't think, I got the impression, Bill, tell me if you got a different impression, that they probably didn't want to push, they wouldn't go through the exercise because of the time it takes them and ultimately money, if they didn't think they were going to get it through. But it's not a guarantee.
I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood that. I thought Bill had said that if we get a lower amount from Verizon, we have to go back and reduce it with Comcast. Did I misunderstand that?
No, Matt, you're, you're spot on. My, my position is the Verizon, we're not going back to Comcast. Put an 18 in the contract.
And if they don't?
I think they will.
Do we have to go back to Comcast?
Well, we don't have to agree to a deal with them. We can keep going under. I, I think we're, we're probably one session away. We'll find out definitively. We were hoping to have the definition before today's meeting, to be frank. We lit, a week and a half ago, we had the meeting. We said, "This work session, let them see if you can get the finance team." They said they thought they could get a confirmation by the end of last week, which obviously didn't happen. But again, I, it's possible, anything's possible in a negotiation. I, I just, I, I feel very strongly that Verizon, and I'll say this, the amount of money that we're asking for, the 18, or the 2.5% on the customers, Topsfield's a smaller community, and so the, the bottom-line impact of Verizon's wallet is not substantially greater. It's maybe less. It's just the numbers that they have to be comfortable with.
Okay. Any other questions for Bill from the board?
Well, I would, I would just like to make a comment that it's unfortunate. We've got to deal with a company like this who doesn't really seem to care much about the communities that... a, a company like this who doesn't really seem to care much about, uh, the communities that they're dealing with. We all know that they don't make much money, so it's really tough, uh, for them to negotiate, I suppose. And that's a joke, uh, I can tell you-
I was grinning.
Pardon me?
I was grinning.
I can tell you that I'm working hard to figure out a way to cut my cable because I'm sick of both of these companies. Uh, I think they're both bad. And, uh, if I can get to that point, I'm going to eliminate them totally. And I'm getting closer every day.
Okay, any other thoughts before we move on? All right, well, Bill, thank you for all your time and the team. I know you've got a team working with you, Raphael and Kevin.
I, I would like to second that. Bill, um, Marshall and Raphael, appreciate-
Oh, Marshall, yeah, I forgot about you.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, you're actually correct. I, uh, clearly of the three of us do by far the least. It's really, uh, Bill and Raphael in that order. And then me is a way, way distant.
Well, I, I understand that you've indicated to me that you're on the fringe, but, but, uh, yeah, you're still there.
Okay, thank you so much, Bill.
Just as one quick editorial comment, I was delighted to see that Raphael has taken out his papers for the select board. Um, he would be a fine candidate and I endorse him fully as, as far as talents and his vision of what should happen.
Thank you, Bill.
Good night.
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 Our next item is the, uh, new MBTA multifamily zoning requirement. Um, you know, we have, uh, a requirement to get our response back to the state by the end of this month and that we're going to be doing that jointly with the planning board. So Kevin, if I could turn it over to you to let us know where we are. Um, we do have up on our board docs, the input from the planning board, and I think there were a few others who have contributed to that, so we have their thoughts up here. Um, but we do have to write a specific letter, um, and that's what Kevin is working on, using this as input and other thoughts. So with that, Kevin, if I could turn it over to you?
Certainly, so just by way of update, a couple weeks ago, we talked about the, um, MBTA multifamily zoning requirements that, um, are being proposed, uh, from the housing and economic development, uh, at the state level. We've independently but collectively at the same time been doing some research into some of what those impacts look like. And ultimately, our next step is to draft a letter, um, either from the, one from the board and one from the planning board or a, a, a joint letter from the select board and the planning board that we could submit by the end of this month, uh, with our concerns and feedback on the, uh, requirements. Um, at 5:01, I did send Debbie a draft letter and I apologize, I was running back from the negotiations over at Stewart, um, and put a last couple of sentences in and sent it. So it should be up on board docs, uh, by the time this meeting's, uh, wrapped up or first thing thereafter. Um, but what it is, um, we had a meeting with a number of mid-sized communities like Topsfield, the town administrators and managers did, about eight of us, um, a few weeks ago. We put our thoughts out verbally and then collectively or individually sent to, um, one of the, um, town administrators to collect the feedback and kind of give us a template to work off of a framework for a letter that we could then propose. Um, that letter was received earlier this week. Uh, that's what I'm working off of in the draft that you'll see, is sort of the format. The words in there are specific to Topsfield, the thoughts reflective of Topsfield, reflective of what my conversations have been with department heads, but also my conversations with, um, Martha Morrison of the planning board, um, and others on what the impacts around, uh, this requirement, the zoning requirement would look like. And so, um, it certainly needs a little bit of work and I did try to take some of the language from, um, what was sent from the planning boards, uh, PM Martha Morrison, uh, and incorporate that into, into this one letter. But I, for tonight's purposes, obviously no votes, the, the letter won't be ready. I think we wait till the next work session to, to get, get feedback between then and then. Redline, um, from the board and then on, on that meeting on the 30th, we can hopefully approve a letter that we can then send, um, to, um, to the state acknowledging our concerns. Um, and I will just go back, because I did say this at one point previously, that we were considering doing a letter from all the town administrators. But we decided independently that a letter from each of the communities, um, really is the right place to go, um, with this. Um, it, because it's, it's the volume, I guess, in a sense, uh, it, it makes a lot of sense to have, you know, individual concerns, but within the same sort of framework, like I said. Um, so that's where, um, that's where we're at at this time.
Um, Kevin, apart from the content, um, of the letter, there's the question to throw out to the board about whether you'd like to do a joint letter with the planning board. Um, in, in talking with Martha, you know, we were saying that the points are going to be the same. Um, we have the same issues, so it might make sense to have this be a combined letter and just state the concerns of the town, um, in one letter. But I can just open it up to get your thoughts on whether it's one or two letters.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Cam.
What would be a more powerful response? I mean, I, I think this, this letter is, has got to really crush it. And I think we've got a lot of facts and I haven't seen Kevin's, obviously Kevin's letter yet, but would it be more powerful to the state if it came from both the zoning as well as our board?
I, I was just going to say, I think one co-signed, one co-signed letter of the planning and select board seems to be, you know, presenting a unified front that, listen, everybody, you know, in the elected world that has kind of a, a say or a stake, better said, uh, in this, we all agree as one big set of, of people that this, you know, this is how we feel.
And to, to make it be powerful, we each would want to put in all of the points, all of the major points, so it'd just be redundant.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the showing of us as a very small town with, you know, all boards contributing and, and signing this, you know, it's, I, I can't imagine the town that's not going to have a similar response to ours. But I, I think we'd be, I think we'd be well advised to, to combine with them.
I do think there'll be differences between the, the towns potentially with, they have different circumstances. It may be, there may be some differences, but that's not bad. The idea, as a matter of fact, maybe it's good, it gives them more things to read and worry about. Different towns have different issues, how are we going to get around these and, and get them approved? Uh, one of the, one of the ways in which to do it could be also that we, the planning board essentially prepares a letter that they, it's their letter and then we provide a letter which is an imprimatur on theirs. We can add some additional items in it if we want, an over, something about, you know, something taxes or something of that nature, additional information, but it could be as simple as, as that. If we don't have a lot of information and if it has our imprimatur, it's essentially the same as a joint, a joint letter, but we had the technical people who have to deal with it, meaning the planning board, uh, provide a letter with that data that we say, with a cover letter, this is our submission. That's, it's an alternative, I think.
Boyd, any thoughts?
Uh, my thoughts-
Now I'll reach out to Martha, go ahead, Boyd.
Um, my thoughts are, um, this is such a huge debacle that it's going to get totally watered down before it's over. However, we still need to do our due diligence and make sure it gets handled well, as well as we can put it together. Whether we do a joint letter, which I somewhat agree with, and whether we do separate letters, which I somewhat agree with, we can, we can go either way, but I think it's important that, um, I think it's important that we recognize, well, I'm, I'm asking if you agree with me that this whole thing is going to get watered down so badly, so much in my opinion, before it sees the light of day, that, uh, it'll be totally different when it comes back to us after a few months or a few years.
I don't know how it couldn't get, I don't know how it couldn't, Boyd, to your point, given that this is such a wide brush that's meant to capture all the towns treating them exactly the same. That's, that's not logical, it doesn't make sense.
Well, I-
Can I go to Martha at, at this point, just to, to get your thought, Martha, on whether you'd go with two letters or one combined?
Well, my experience with the state is that they have a very short attention span. Uh, and, and so I'm making everyone laugh, uh, that there is the problem of overdoing it. Uh, and that a single letter from Topsfield, uh, that is signed by the select board and the planning board would probably be something that they might read. Um, and again, my experience is that we can't count on they're actually reading anything that we send them. Uh, but if enough communities, and Kevin has been working on that, um, complain and express their concerns, uh, then presumably they will have to pay attention and do what Boyd says. Uh, so I'm in favor of a single letter from the two boards. Um, we've already sent to Kevin, uh, everything that the planning board has come up with, uh, along with, uh, work that, um, Dick did with Greg Crum, uh, that Holger Luther did on traffic. Uh, there's more to be said about that, uh, but, you know, let's not, you know, become too distracting. Um, but I, I think a single letter would probably be in our best interest. Uh, a single forceful letter that really clearly itemizes all of the impacts. Now, many of those are things that the planning board has come up with. Uh, we sent a draft to Kevin with the idea that the select board could add to that from your perspective in terms of taxes and, um, you know, perhaps infrastructure issues that, um, that the planning board doesn't really have something to do with. Uh, but that's sort of where we are. I, I would just ask, um, that once this letter is drafted, that we get it so we can circulate it to the planning board. Um, we just captured, um, the, the comments and the, the concerns that were expressed at a meeting. Uh, the planning board hasn't voted on any of this and we're not going to be able to vote until after the deadline. Uh, but we can circulate the letter to planning board members, all of whom have, you know, serious concerns, uh, and just let them say if they have any problems or any issues. Uh, and then I think they'll be fine, you know, if we move forward. Um, I did send it around, um, at least to one planning board member who was very, you know, really adamant about the issues. You know, and that's what's in the document that Kevin got from us.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Um, just so everyone knows, the letter that Kevin drafted is now up on board docs. So we can take a look at that and get comments back to Kevin. Um, and we could either on the 21st or the 23rd, um, take a look at all those comments incorporated and see if that looks good to us. And on the 23rd, we could pass it over to the planning board to circulate. Um, with a, either a final vote or, you know, on the 30th, it would be out in time because we are meeting on the 30th as well. Oh, no, we're not meeting on the 30th. So I guess we would just have to assume the edits from the planning board look good, that can be circulated to us. But if we try to shoot by Monday to get comments back to Kevin, is that doable for everybody?
It's doable.
Monday.
Yes.
And, um, Neil, I know had posted in the chat, if we could just speak to, uh, kind of the high-level issues of, of what this presents. Um, Neil, do you want to speak? You're on mute.
I don't believe Neil has capability of audio.
Oh, he doesn't have audio, okay. Um, Kevin, do you want to just speak at a, a high level of, of what they're proposing? And what are, are most significant concerns are?
Boyd, so the, the state, um, delegate, uh, state legislature passed a law, um, last year that basically requires, uh, communities to adopt a high, uh, uh, high-density, by right, uh, zone, uh, minimum of 50 acres, um, with a 15-unit-per-acre count as a minimum threshold. Um, the, the law itself doesn't get into that detail, Neil, but the law allows Housing and Economic Development, um, Secretary Kenealy's office to now create the guidance, which is what that entails. It also, um, in Topsfield's an adjacent MBTA community, meaning that we touch a community that has either rail stop, subway stop, bus stop, ferry landing or an airport. Um, and although we don't have, um, an MBTA stop where you typically find transit-oriented development, in which the state encourages to locate high-density transit-oriented development, um, because of our status as an adjacent community, we are at the same minimum standard as, um, any other community that is adjacent or within the, um, that it might have a stop, um, or two in their community. And so, um, each community is unique, but there are certainly similarities between, um, different communities. Uh, Topsfield, um, has been communicating with other communities, Hamilton, Wenham, Ipswich, uh, Boxford, et cetera. Um, as a lot of these communities are on septic, not sewer. Um, these communities have, um, limitations. We have a very sensitive watershed in the Ipswich River where we pull our water, our drinking water from. Um, for example, Topsfield has the ability to pull 148, um, sorry, 157 million gallons a year of water. Currently, we're pulling 148 million gallons of water. The proposal of 750 units would add, we estimate 29 million gallons of water. And that would then exceed the DEP, uh, threshold, uh, or maximum that the towns allow to pull. So that, it's a little bit at odds with, with that. Um, for example, there's also the infrastructure component of, and, and, um, the cost that could come along with something of this nature, which, um, as an example, might be, um, this is family housing and our schools, if we have 32% increase in our housing stock as a result of this, our schools could see, uh, significant, uh, capacity issues that could result in additions or even a new school or two having to be built. Um, which obviously we would need to work with MSBA on and, and understand if, if, you know, what's available for funding to help us on something of that nature. Um, but those are certain things that we certainly would be aware of. And then going back to the fact that we are, um, a septic community, there are certain limitations, um, that we would have as well as, I should say, there's obviously environmental, uh, concerns as well. Um, anything from added, uh, because we're not directly on or within walking distance of a commuter rail, um, there could be more vehicle congestion to get to those, um, transportation hubs. Um, adding potentially congestion on our roads as well as, um, emissions that come from that. And then I think just generally understanding, there's a lot of stills that we need to understand. Um, and these are the proposed requirements, I would emphasize that at this time. Um, I, the, the state is receiving feedback and ultimately, um, the more fact-based information, data-driven information that we can provide, um, hopefully will allow for informed decisions in the future around, um, ensuring that the requirements that are, that are passed to the towns, um, have, have a, a positive impact at the end of the day. And so we'll, we'll-
Does that, I'm sorry, Kevin, does that give you what you need, Neil? Is that what you were looking for? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, you can call me tomorrow if you want to refine it, votes or anything like that.
If I may, if I may, I'm, I'm sorry, Martha.
Oh, uh, Kevin, I think you and I need to have a little discussion about the letter. Looked at it. Um, now I have been writing letters about this kind of thing for a long time to the state. Um, and I think we should have a little chat about, um, you know, basically what, what's included. I know you've got a lot of, you know, a lot of good stuff, um, but there are other things that should be included. And, um, I think, um, we, uh, we, we should not be mixing up 40Bs with this because this is not a 40B, you know?
No, but I, I think the ultimate goal, um, Ms. Morrison, is the, is housing production. And I do think it's worth noting that Topsfield's doing their fair, they've, they've done their fair share, um, in some regards, um, collaboratively across the board, including the, the affordable housing component. But maybe we can talk offline, I would say that-
Yeah, I think we should talk offline. Uh, as I say, this, this legislation is, um, kind of a 40B on steroids and some- kind of a 40B on steroids in some ways, and don't quote me on that, Neil. That there is no affordability requirement, there are no profit caps. There is nothing in this legislation that, you know, is like a 40B. But that's a different creature altogether. And we have, we're certainly familiar with that. But Kevin, let's, let's us talk offline if we could.
Thank you, Martha. Appreciate you taking the time to do that. Boyd, did you have one final comment?
Final, but it just goes on. I'm like beating a dead horse here. I want to hearken back to Martha's comment earlier when she said that the state agencies often have a very short memory. Well, my opinion is worse than that. An awful lot of state agencies don't care, in my opinion, how we feel and what we think we need, okay? And when I see any pistol like this put out by an organization like the MBTA, I say, you gotta be kidding me. So I'm, I'm backing up, I'm backing up what I said earlier. This thing is going to get so watered down that it'll never see the light of day as it is now. And I hope it never sees the light of day again. I'm done.
Don't quote him.
I think it's important to understand the extent to which this has an effect. It only has an effect on grants from three organizations within the state that relate to housing and that. It isn't as if somebody's going to come down and put us in handcuffs. If we don't, we don't do this, if we're not able to do it, then we simply don't, can't apply for the grants until such time as we somehow figure out how to do it. And then presumably we would be eligible for the grants. So it's simply a grant eligibility and it's a requirement. The second thing is that we pretty much recognize that this is kind of an attempt on the part of the state to do zoning from the state level. And the state doesn't do zoning. Zoning is a local thing that we do. As far as it being watered down, one of the things that they may very well do is provide waivers. And so they'll look at what we put in or what we complained about and say, oh, well, Topsfield, you'll get this much of a waiver because of that or whatever. And somehow bless it and still allow us then to have the ability to do it, but give them something of what they want. So it's a lot of things up in the air, but it is, as we point out, important to get this in front of. We don't have to send anything in. This is a comment period and individuals can send it in. It's not just the town that can send it in. Any individual who's gotten into this or has concerns about it can submit this letter, submit communications to the state, reference to it during this comment period.
I, I hope that what Boyd, you and Dick have said is true. I'm not as optimistic that the state is just going to say, yeah, you can opt out of it, or that they would hold it to just holding back some grants. They are very focused on having this housing developed. And there's nothing that says they're going to stop at those grants or that they are going to give the waivers.
To, to your point, Lynn, and I'll promise you guys I'll shut up after this. We had somewhat the same issue at 57 Perkins Row when the Housing Authority didn't care what we said about the problems of that development. And we submitted, the town submitted a fairly sizable package to them. And we're, there's some evidence that they didn't even read it. So they don't care what we feel, in my opinion, and they'll do what they want to do. And, and housing is an issue statewide, and we all know that. But trying to do what they want to do in towns like Topsfield is ludicrous.
And it's even worse in towns like Wenham. They're half our size and they're still being asked to do 750 units, which for us, that's a third additional housing. For them, it's like half. The impact of that to the schools is just going to be devastating. Not to mention the septic issue, we said. We can do one house, maybe two per acre. They're telling us to put 15. You know, so anyway, all right, well, thank you for that update, Kevin. And we'll, we'll all give you feedback based upon the, the letter that's up there. And we'll see all that input and discussions with Martha yields as a document that we can review either on the 21st or the 23rd. I don't know which would be better. Okay, moving on then to the warrant, we have an updated ATM and an updated STM. So I guess we'll be discussing version 5.01. Kevin, that's our latest.
Yes. Yes, and that is the, we've had, well, if you look at version 4.02, which is also, I believe, posted on board docs. That's the red line off the last version, the last clean version, which was sent out at the last discussion. The changes are reflective in 5.01. So 402 will give you a sense of changes made between the last meeting and the 501. There's Pine Grove Cemetery under Article 22. Nothing really of any significance, but just a little more better wording that Mr. Gant provided on that one.
Are we looking at 4.02, Kevin, in the red line?
It'd be easiest probably to go off to 4.02. So that one, you'll see there incorporates a couple of minor changes. 23, very similar, just a little bit of tweaking on the language. You look at tree removal, 25. Instead of the word along though, we put on the town's property. This one's a little more significant. This is Article 28. This is the MS4. The language that we landed on for just the facts of what MS4 is, is there. And then I added the line, the permit has been in effect since 2016 and requires additional work to ensure compliance through fiscal 23. Just to give it a little more relativity around what we're looking for, because the first part's what really MS4 is, that tells us what the article's for. The recodification, that's representative of a small tweak from Mr. Gant as well. You'll notice under the Masco 31st, that's in red. What I, KP rewrote that in a way that the school was not comfortable with and that Desi did not approve. I went back to Matt from KP and said that the school doesn't approve of your changes. Are you okay with leaving it the way they had it? He said, yes, he is. So this is representative of the original language that Masco provided.
This one, Kevin, is really confusing. The only thing it looks like that changed is the VC and the VB. You would think they would just say bold that and italicize it, and that's the change. Because I was comparing word for word and it's identical. And it doesn't seem to make sense with the description, which says, you know, they're correcting an error where they incorrectly referenced the removal of the second sentence. Well, there's nothing gone or added or changed. It's just the VC that's different.
Yeah, and Matt and I had that conversation and Mike Harvey and I had that conversation. And Mike was pretty adamant that this was approved by Desi and we couldn't change it. And I did confirm it with Matt. Matt said, yeah, it's a little confusing. We might have to explain it at town meeting. But that, based on the fact that the schools really were dug, there were other changes that were modified in the other articles from Masco that the schools accepted. This one, Mike pushed back and he said, I, I can't, this, Desi basically said, don't touch this one as presented.
Okay, the other thing that's wrong with this is that it says, agree to amend by deleting the text shown in strike through and inserting bold italicized text. There is no bold italicized text.
I mean, I can, I can go back to them again and just.
Because others do do that. They do put it in bold italicized. For the other three ones that they have, it makes sense. This one, it's like, it's totally confusing because there is no bold text. So you can't tell what they're doing. Even the VB and VC aren't bold italicized.
Right. Why don't I, I'll, I'll, I'll work with cleaning that up again. If that, if there's that or anything else, ma'am chair, that you want me to go back again to Masco and KP.
That was the only one that, it was just really confusing. I think the others looked fine to me.
And it's just that language at the end of the first paragraph that, that's a concern. Or was it, I, I know the description at the end's a little clunky. It does, Matt's comment was the same as what your comment was, but Kate, for whatever reason, Mike really dug in and said that that's, that description's what we're providing on all the warrants and that, that's what Desi signed off on.
Even if they want to put that kind of wording in, then the description above should be changed because it says, by deleting the text in strike through and inserting the bold italicized. And there is no bold italicized. So that, which isn't the body of the words, is just wrong because there's nothing there that's being inserted in bold.
Oh, sorry, you're still at the first paragraph, ma'am chair, correct?
Yes, right.
Okay, yep, I'm with you. Yep, that, I, that's, that one I agree with. I think maybe that's just something that was an oversight when they were going back and forth that didn't get cleaned.
It could be because it's like a boilerplate with the other three.
Yep, let me, I'll make a quick note on that one.
One of the reasons it's important to get it right now is because last year they did not get it right. And we did put some points in there, and one of the concerns had to do with the order in which they put these things in where they were deleting and then adding, and it was the question of which is the one that you're doing. So it is, Kevin, it is absolutely right that we spend time now or don't do it at town meetings so that we have to redo it at the next town meeting. It's a little embarrassing.
Because all six of these articles are to correct errors.
I agree. I will go back for sure and see if we can. I think that that, to me, on that top one, should be easy enough to, to, I think that might have been just back, in the back and forth between the lawyers and Mike, or lawyer and Mike. The version that they agreed to, that might have been just an oversight on that particular line of striking, that not striking. I know that, I, I agree as well that the description is more broad than I think it, it makes it a little more confusing. But I did push on that one a little bit and Mike said, no, I, this is Desi's language. They've already approved it.
And if they want to keep that, Kevin, then I would just say what they're replacing it with, where it says, and replacing it with, well, put all that in bold italicized. And then it's like, okay, that's what's going in.
Oh, yeah, no, no, absolutely right. No, I was, I was referring to the italicized section being a little clunky. I agree with the first paragraph. I'm 100% there.
Yeah, it is, it's really, I have no idea what they're referring to. And so I, as a resident, would be very confused about what they're seeking to correct.
Right. Okay, I'm gonna, I'll go, so I'll, as an action item, I'm going to plan to go back to Mike and to the lawyer, or Kate, to my, Matt, our lawyer, and Mike Harvey, and make sure we can reconcile that last piece. And I'll bring back up the description that came up and can we do a little bit better on that and see what they said?
Okay.
The note that's in there under Article 34. Matt said, I just removed it. There was no further conversation that we needed to have on that one. According to, when we talked, there's no changes needed there.
Was he adding the word the or taking it out? I can't.
No, he just made a note onto it that this appears to be a typo that should be highlighted for the school district and other member towns, which was then highlighted, which they then said that's not an error. And then Matt said, okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's an error. It says, no, I mean, you need the the there.
It's not, right. And then that just leaves us with the highlighted.
Oh, yeah, okay. Never mind, I, I know what you mean.
Comment, may I? This, this whole Masco thing is a pretty complicated series of articles, in my opinion. Do we want to make that a consent agenda?
It's mostly, it's in line with what we did last year, Mr. Jackson. And in this sense, it's, they're all, it doesn't change the essence of the agreement, mostly just improving the language to be more consistent and accurate.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I think his question was, should we make it a consent agenda rather than voting on each of them individually?
I think it is a consent, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was the question. Do we want to make it a consent?
It already is one.
Right above Article 30th. Says consent agenda.
Boyd, or take it out of a consent?
Well, I'm saying, you know, it, it's, by making a consent agenda, it kind of seems to me that you're giving people at town hall or town meeting just to say, yeah, I agree with all of that. And in order to discuss either any of them, people have to agree to take it out of the consent agenda. And I'm saying, I think it's a complicated enough subject, we ought to leave it out of the consent agenda and let each of those items be discussed independently on their own.
I misunderstood what you were saying. I apologize.
You disagree with me, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm not even saying I disagree. I just, I, the way you phrased it, it sounded like you wanted to make it a consent agenda. And then I, then as it was rightly pointed out, it already is one.
Sorry, I didn't make it clear. I thought, I, I just thought.
I probably should have just kept my mouth shut and let you all talk about it.
Well, maybe, maybe nobody else understood me either, but I've made, I've said my piece, so I'll let it lay. If you guys want to leave it in consent agenda form, we'll leave it that way.
I mean, we've seen that people have no problem opposing the consent agenda. So if there are people who have an issue with it, then, then obviously it'll come right out of it. And it only takes one, literally a single person to oppose it, right? And then it comes out. So you may be that single person, Boyd.
I would, I would advocate that if there was anything of material within the changes, like last year, we had some of the changes with how the five-year average, for example, with how we calculate the enrollment, absolutely should be a standalone. These articles are, are in essence typos and error, and grammatical errors that they're, they're, or like the C to the B that we talked about in that one earlier at 31, Article 31. That, it might be even harder to explain that in a sense than just, and I know Desi's already approved all six of these.
So in the simplest terms, this doesn't have a, this doesn't have any material, doesn't change the material of, you know, any material changes to the agreement. It's really just for the second year in a row, cleaning up an existing contract.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, I'm comfortable leaving it in the consent if they can get that Article 31 cleaned up. Because I bet people might, to Boyd's point, say, I don't really get that one, so let's pull it out and talk about it. But people can pull it out, and I, I think for the most part, if people see these are just typos, they'll be okay.
I will leave it up to you guys that are smarter than I am to make the right decision.
That's definitely not me.
I'm with him.
All right, any other questions or it looks like nothing else was changed? This is such a nit, but I mentioned it, Kevin, down where Cameron's name is, there are two spaces before his name starts. You just take those out. His name's just indented a little bit. It's off, off center. You see the dot, dot?
Which one?
Where is that?
He signs, where Cam would sign.
Doesn't look that way on mine.
It looks, it looks fine on mine.
Oh, I, I see two dots on mine, no?
Nope.
And when I went to version 501.
Yeah, I'm on five, sorry.
I'm on 402. Let me pull up 501, see if.
Five is clean. Five is clean.
Five, okay, my five is still showing it too, so maybe it's my computer.
We'll add that to the bad mic list of considerations.
Oh, my gosh, did you not hear me then?
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You're fine.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, on my version five, it also has two dots. So if that's just my computer, ignore it. I don't want you to be askew, Cam, that's all.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've worked very hard not to be askew.
I'd also point out that at last Monday's FinCon meeting, Articles, versus Article seven through Article 13, which is the consent order, the first consent order, were all approved by the FinCon on their end for, for language and, and content.
Great, thank you.
On Monday, this coming Monday, they're taking up the remaining warrant articles for their votes as well.
And just relative to the, the top that we talked about before, everything is all set for us to hold the meeting in Masco. And just relative to the the top that we talked about before, everything is all set for us to hold the meeting in Masco for the two days.
Oh, yeah. No, we were out there yesterday, Beth, Chief Hubby and I. Um auditorium looks great. Um, we're we're prepared if numbers get crazy to go every other row so people can space out just for a comfort level. Um, and the other thing that's a slight modification is that um the stage is, I believe the stage is significantly bigger than what's been at Proctor. And so having the FinCom and the select board on the stage um like we did in the past two years, I know at the auditorium at Proctor was different different situation. Um, will be set up on stage um with two mics down on the floor for the audience to participate and add comment and questions and two mics on the stage, one for the moderator and one for the FinCom um and or anyone from the select board uh or myself who uh is called upon to speak. And we have the overflow room too. The basketball court, the parquet basketball court around the backside is going to be available to us as well for overflow. Um, knock on wood, I think six hundred, we have six hundred people that can fit in the main room. And we obviously like to have everybody in the main room as a priority, but we will have that in case, for whatever reason, something on this warrant sparks interest and and a significant amount of community come out beyond the six hundred to half capacity to bring them in and participate.
What is the largest number that anyone can recall having for a town meeting?
Hundred sixteen was two.
We may have had five or six hundred people in the past.
Yeah. Over at Proctor.
I mean, I know that the very first one I attended, which was all the way back to five years ago. Uh, there was overflow into the cafeteria and the cafeteria was pretty full as well, but I don't know what that adds up to.
Uh, that that has happened a few times, but I think only two or three um in my memory. Um, normally we do it in the auditorium itself, but you we could be looking at five or six hundred people.
Okay, all right. And it's important that we have that overflow setup. Well, no, I'm 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 not arguing that. It was just a it was just a question of curiosity.
How much does it on your flow hold, Kevin?
Um, it's it, we're gonna use the bleachers. We'll put a bleach down um and we'll have some audio in there and and videos so people can watch. Um, I don't actually know off the top the exact number. Um, but it's. You're talking about the wooden bleachers that pull out? Yeah. Where they do.
Number at that point.
Well, where they do graduations, that basketball court or the other basketball court? Is the basis positions in the um fieldhouse, I believe. I think this is the one. This is a smaller space than that. Oh, the small the small courts. Okay. Yeah. It's the wood floor. Yeah. A beautiful space. I was actually very impressed that they had the parquet there. It was actually really nice. It's a nice has some good, it's a good lighting, good audience, but it's not a obviously want to be in the auditorium if we can.
Okay, um, any other questions on the ATM? Otherwise, we'll move to the STM.
Mr. Gait, did you want to bring up the compensated absences and the unemployment fund?
Sure, while we're on the uh on the area of Masco here. The titles, I think, need to be adjusted on the Masco instead of having six exact titles the same at a minimum, uh number them one, two, three, four, five, six, so that people can more easily refer to which one are you talking about? Or I provided Kevin with a suggested name that includes a dash and the topic that's being dealt with in that particular one. I would suspect that that's a better way to do it with the topic included and just shorten the the men mask and all that regional agreement. I mean, we all understand it it it's nothing legally technical about the title. It's just something to help. It's an eye catcher and helps the citizens recognize what they're talking about and what the issues are. So I would again strongly recommend it. And I'm disappointed that you didn't put those in there for people to make a decision on. Kevin, because we don't have it, so to speak, on the fly. Uh, but you can read read them if you have them right there. I I I can find them here somewhere.
So initially I put in there dash amendment because they have in the text the actual amendment that the this re- because they each are new amendment to the agreement technically. Um KP took that out. Um, and so they took out the additional language at the end, the dash amendment fourteen or amendment thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, whatever the number was originally. Um, they took that out in the version they came back with. And my only concern is if we put a number associated with this, that it could cause confusion because I do understand a hundred percent. My mind was in the same place yours was when I put the amendment to it. So they had some, they were separated and unique. But I do believe that that the the only concern I would have is that if we put a dash one on the first one or dash two or dash three or dash four, um, it wouldn't tie to the actual amendment that's being done on the overall because these are amendments off of amendments, right? So there's already, I think, twelve existing amendments to the agreement. The Article thirtieth is amendment like thirteen.
Real quick, I'll just give you the uh the the titles that I had here. Maybe it'll help people see it. Uh, if I can uh share up at the top.
Debbie, does Dick have share capability?
I don't see the share at the top, yeah.
Yep, you got it.
You should now.
I'm not going to spend much time on it. I I I don't see share at the top. Uh, maybe that's not where I put it. I'm sorry. I remember now. What's share screen?
Is it at the bottom? Mine is at the bottom.
Second, I will um I have to find it. There you go. Okay. Okay, did it not bring it up?
It did. We can see it.
Can you see it? Yeah. So that's just my suggestion on the 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 six articles to shorten up men mask and regional agreement. Basically, that's what it is. And then the first one, dash appointment, payments, uh budget approval, amendment procedure, member uh admission and member withdrawal. I I think somebody, if they want to talk about it, can more easily talk about that particular one instead of saying Article thirty four and it's oh, the third one down and whatever else. So those are my suggested titles. If anybody didn't have a if there are no issues with it, then we should go with those, I would suspect.
Well, does it not differentiate enough that it's Article thirty third and we go to Article thirty fourth when we're talking about it?
I I don't think so, especially since somebody's going to have a table of contents at the beginning of the warrant and at the big and that table of contents will list these. And it looks pretty lame, I think, to have six of them with the same title and and this I can't imagine why this is not a better way to do it.
I I I don't see anything wrong with the addition to the to the titles of the amendments.
If it's okay, I can go back to KP because I'm going to be going back to them anyway for Article thirty one and and I can ask them why they eliminated any differential between these articles uh when I initially submitted it and just see if there's a reason. But if there's no reason and he's comfortable, Mr. Gait, if you want to send me those, I can actually just send them right over to Matt and say, Matt.
You should have them.
Okay.
They they were in that they were in that thing that I sent you. Yeah. Um, so uh the reason that they would have the reason that they would have taken it out is because I think Masco put in the amendment section that they were dealing with. And so they there's some parts where, you know, really in this section and that section. I think that's why they pulled it out. There's nothing legal, illegal or whatever about the titles. This is up to us to pick a title that makes sense to the citizen and that people can reference. So go ahead, a- ask a good, ask them. And I can't imagine they're going to have a problem with that.
Yeah, it should be fine. I I agree. I think there it was kind of interesting that he he didn't give an alternative and he just eliminated the initial title that was provided because I I had a very similar thought, but I'll I'll find out. And if it's okay, we'll put it in.
Yeah, uh for for purposes of going into uh town meeting or whatever else, I had just asked Kevin to come up with the the uh the dollars that we have in the compensated absences fund and the unemployment compensation fund just as a a marker for us to have so we know about about what it is, even if we're talking about it. And if you have that, um, Kevin?
I do. I do. So on the um compensated absences, um what we we did an analysis of each of the retirements since two thousand eighteen. Uh typically, we've seen three on average, three people each year retiring. Um, we believe between now and the end of this fiscal year, we could have at least two, if not three people retire as well. Um, which would add to the existing twenty twenty two, three people that have retired already Christine Manning, Gary Hayward and Laura at the library. Um, typically, that would draw down on average, we've seen anywhere from um, you know, anywhere from the the mid to high teens all the way up to the third, the high thirty thousands. I had uh Barbara, when she retired was forty two thousand, Dave Bond was sixty thousand. So there's some significant spikes as well. But if you take into consideration the three people for fiscal twenty two that um still could retire, the average, if you estimate, say, twenty thousand on potential in each of them because they're all very long time employees here in the town. Um, you're looking at um the count going down to about twenty five thousand. Um, then I believe we probably have at least three people in addition to that next year that are eligible and could retire as well. Um, and so replenishing that compensated absence with a hundred would give us um another, we draw down an additional sixty. So at the end of that, we should be end of fiscal twenty three, we should have enough in there in case there's another retirement or two that comes in. Um, so we don't drain the account. Um, but we should have enough in there to cover what we we could expect from a retirement standpoint over the remainder of this and the remaining next fiscal.
And at this point, based on the retirements that we've done so far, how much is left in the account?
Um, right now we have eighty five thousand. Um.
Roughly, okay, roughly eighty, that's close. If that's the area, that's all, just the the general area where it is.
Yep.
And you explained the number of people and the dollars associated with these things, anywhere from high teens to thirty thousand, abouts, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
And the unemployment?
And on the unemployment, um we have currently, um seventy seven thousand right now in the account and the trans we're looking at keeping it level like we had last year. We've expended on a given year, um, the last last year, well, this year, uh twenty two, it was a significantly low number, really at twenty nine hundred dollars. Um, twenty one, we had over thirty one thousand. Fiscal twenty, we had over close to twenty two thousand. Um, nineteen, we had ten thousand and eighteen, we had twelve thousand. Um, and so that's it it varies significantly. Um, like I said, we had a peak of thirty one in one year. And we had a low of twenty nine last year. Um, and so those the those are roughly the numbers that we've looked at historically. Welcome.
Okay.
Anything else?
What what about the uh, there were a number of uh changes. You were you were clicking through some changes, but I'm not sure. Uh, we 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 saw them all. Could I could I ask you though, you did say now Article third is still being worked on. But uh the the one thing that we do know in the explanation of Article third is what is in Article two. And it would seem to me we want to match those numbers up at least unless there's something I've missed there.
I'm just from a consistency standpoint, so I don't dip around in different places at this point. I left that highlighted in the former number, but that will tie back to the fourteen thousand eight fifty um once I update those numbers.
Okay. Do you expect the the one fourteen, three, eight fifty to change?
I do not, but there's the the only thing that's out there right now is the um we're going out for bid on the outsourcing of the cemetery. And that number, if it if it's a better, much better number than what we expected, there could be the possibility that we reduce that line item in the budget and reduce the offset um that's coming in. But that I wouldn't say is likely, but it's potential.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then s- some of the text changes, uh what did you what did you want to do with those? For example, in water and and water, there's a repeat there and 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 water. I don't have them all right here. Um, let me uh see the whole thing at once.
Well, Dick is finding that, Kevin, uh just one typo that I saw. And I'm actually in the five point oh one, so it didn't make it over um or didn't get changed. Under Article twenty fifth, the tree removal.
Okay, let me get it. Yep, I'm there.
If you go down to the italicized print that is the description.
Mm hmm.
Um, in the second sentence, it says towns possessive properties. It should just be town.
Yeah.
Oh, that's because they made the change the last. Yeah, that's right. That was the that was uh the word on came in and language came out. It said along the towns' properties. I'll make sure that's updated.
Kevin, my concern is that that was in there. So I'm trying to catch what you what you caught of what I gave you and what you didn't catch uh so that so that we can get it right. Uh I'm not sure the best way to uh.
Well, Dick, you can look at what you've sent him and look at what the document currently says to see if there's anything that was missed.
Uh, yeah, there there was some like that. The the towns was was one of them, but I'm not sure how you put it in there. Okay. Uh I I just don't know where you are on this. Um.
So what I did last night when I received your edits before I left, um I took your your edits in the version that I was already manipulating on four oh two and I went each of the articles, I replaced the language that you had recommended. I deleted the language you deleted. I believe that's the one that I might have missed.
Okay, I I, yeah, I don't really follow. So let me just do one of them, for example, twenty third. Um, the this is.
Are you in four point oh one, Dick?
Please.
Are you in four point oh one?
I'm uh uh, yeah, I'm on uh four, yeah, oh, one, yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, I have I have both of them here. Uh yep, I'm on on uh four oh one. Anyway, um, I had the word obsolete taken out because there's no explanation of what we referenced there in obsolete. But what we're trying to do is convince people that we have to change it. If we explained what's obsolete about it, that's fine. It indicates in some ways that it's obsolete because it has no cloud features and things. And I can just see the residents saying, well, I I don't care about cloud features. Why is it costing me this much money? So my suggestion was we take obsolete out and essentially replace it with after software comma, which is no longer supported by Microsoft comma. That's the first thing that they see. They realize it's unsupported software and people typ- typically pick that up as, oh, we got a problem if it's unsupported, I gotta do something. Then, so I think you put some of that in, but then later on down, there's a cross out from later on where it says a sentence. The current billing system is no longer supported by Microsoft. I pulled that whole sentence out because we put it into the witch clause at the beginning.
I'll I I I apologize. I I tried to get this out last night. I got the edits very late and I was trying to get it because I said I'd get it out before I left the office. It was about eight o'clock. I apologize. I will go through this again and make sure that I incorporate.
So how about if I work, can I can I work with you? I don't there's some of the explanations. I'll work with you to to see that we get it right. Okay. I understand. I understand you work the long hours. So uh I'll work with you to try to get it right and uh we'll we'll work from there.
Okay, apart, Dick, from your changes and working with Kevin on these last edits, is there anything else besides filling in the numbers that we are uncomfortable with or want to change? Otherwise, we can vote on these at the next meeting, correct?
Yep.
Right. Uh, and we we need to be moving on this too, especially since we're trying to help the FinCom recognize what's going on here. Um.
I mean, I think this is in really good shape for the FinCom to be working from. This is just some tweaks for the wording.
So the the vote would be a week from today?
Um, it would be on the twenty first, which is about five days away.
Yeah, on Monday.
Oh, on Monday. Okay, okay.
If we if we can't, then we'll we'll force it into into Wednesday.
The only thing I would say.
We can do it better.
On the twenty first, we won't have Article three ready by then. Not I know.
Well, we've approved it before and just pending the final numbers going in. So all the wording is correct and literally all we're doing is putting in the wording. Or we can hold out on Article three altogether and and approve all the others because we have done this in stages before.
That's an easy way to do it too, right?
Um, we would probably just.
I think I think the the MS four uh description, maybe there's some a lot of technical there, but uh somehow we need to be able to. But uh, somehow we need to be able to explain to the people. What's going on? Because we had a question, as you know, you came up with more dollars along the way and whatever else, and there's been the the question about what's ongoing and. What's one time only? And one of the major questions I have is what are the deliverables for sixty five thousand dollars or fifty thousand if that's the. The one time cost, then I understand the fifteen would be a variable cost on an annual basis, but. I think we, even if we don't try to get it in the words, we we need, I need to understand what we're actually getting for that money. So that we can answer that at town meeting. And it's a lot of money and and then the question is why we're there. You know, in some ways I don't misery loves company. I'd love to be able to say. Oh, well, half the other towns in Essex County are doing the same thing we're doing because. They they have to get it. I I I just don't know. It's just a lot of money. And I don't feel we have a lot of explanations.
Well, we can certainly get those offline and and identify what those costs are. I'm hesitant to. Say why we're behind because I think we know why we're behind and we're very reliant on volunteers. And that's what we had. We had a volunteer. Who was helping us out with this and not everything got covered. Um, so I think identifying what we're spending the money on and the fact that this will be corrected. And we won't have a problem going forward is very valid, Dick.
Um, I I don't have a problem. I'm just trying to understand what it is, though. What are we getting for fifty thousand?
And I think we can definitely discuss that offline. Kevin, is that something that?
But the extent to which you might be able to include instead of the gobbledygook in there. About, you know, the the technical things of what the permit is from the which government agency and that. Is there in layman's language, try to explain what's going on here, what what we're going to get, what it means to. What it means to people that they're going to spend that money to get it.
Well, when you're talking with Kevin, you can address that, you know.
Is that is that last sentence? Because I did run it. I shared it with Matt and Chair before I um submitted it in this version. I I feel it is important. Because it is very technical. MS four is one of the more confusing things we do. To have at least what it is. And then the following sentence that I added in this version is very direct, very simple, doesn't throw anyone under the bus. And basically says this will get us compliant through the year under that guy of that permit. Um, is that? Again, I because it's so confusing in the paragraph before, if it's more depth than just that, I'm concerned we'll lose people even further.
Okay. That's.
I mean, it makes sense to me. I I don't. I don't have a problem with it and I like the additional sentence that was added in there that basically said this will get catch us. Up to date to maintain our permit. Um, I don't think people are going to dig into this one, but having the numbers to be able to explain why we need sixty five, I totally agree with Dick. But I don't.
We may or may not put the the numbers in as important as to explain what it is that we're getting, so to speak.
Right, right, the components.
But we need to know the numbers uh, that most of it is for one time and the other part is variable. We need to know those numbers to speak at town meeting.
Yep, no argument. All right, anything else, Dick?
Uh, that's uh, that's it. Uh, you you know, I'm very uncomfortable with the. Uh, police cruiser. And I do think that wording is uh, is challenging. Uh. It it's. We may have proved that the maintenance because of. Brakes and oil change is different, or let's leave it to oil change, that the maintenance is less. And therefore we're correct, but it certainly doesn't catch the whole thing about the fact that it was less at a minimum. We agreed. We agreed at one point. When the town, when the Board of Selectment voted, when the Select Board voted. We said it was break even. And then we proved that some things weren't were worse than that were there, but we still called it break even. We didn't call it as an overall a saving, so I.
I would disagree with that, Dick. What they they showed us, it 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 was not a break even. It showed a savings on their 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 financials. What they showed us is when we would break even. There was a break even date. But the entire analysis showed that there would be some savings. And then it was even greater than that because we got the grant.
So then you and I, you and I disagree. We we know a lot of things that were. We put in there, whether we're comparing apples and oranges with the the functions that the. The functions that were available on the vehicle versus the other vehicles that we had. And then all the other things, uh, I guess we're here to agree that we disagree. But I can, I have a different position.
Well, the only thing I'm concerned about is that people listening to this will say, how are you not, you know, coming to the same conclusion on the same set of financials? A spreadsheet would show you it was a loss, a break even or a savings and.
Go ahead.
And so I just don't want to give them the wrong impression. A spreadsheet was developed. They walked us through it. Whether or not, and some of these were projections. And and they said that we are estimating that this would be the cost to to. Uh, fuel it, so to speak, with electricity. This would be the estimated savings on maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So. They did not have a crystal ball to be able to see what those were, which is why we said. We need a year to analyze how it actually did because you can make a projection. But we want to see the actuals before we do this again, make another investment. Um, and decide to go, you know, and and purchase a second vehicle, which is exactly what they're doing right now. So we had an analysis and a projection and now we're we're seeing how that panned out.
Yeah.
And I think I want to, I I I think it's important to make the point, uh, because I've heard, you know, this is being talked about. This article does not contemplate the type of cruiser. All it says, all it is, is whether or not we are approving the purchase of an additional cruiser. It doesn't, it has information in there about combustion, you know, combustion engine versus EV. But the article does not contemplate one type of vehicle over another. That, as we know, is ultimately the decision of the chief of police, subject to the approval of the select board. So the debate over the type of cruiser. Isn't, in my opinion, really appropriate at town meeting. It's just whether or not we want another cruiser. The time to debate type of cruiser would be when the chief. Brings that to approval before the select board and then we can invite anyone who has comments at that point. To to have that discussion then. If town meeting becomes a dis- a a discussion about EV versus combustion. That has very little to do in reality to the actual article that's being voted up or down.
So I I was actually referring to the explanation and again, I I feel it's disingenuous to simply say. It had savings in it, uh, because and I'd be glad to go through that with any resident that wants to see my interpretation of that. Same data. So we have the same data, but I certainly read it differently, I guess. So that's a problem for me. But that's the way I see it, but I do, but I do feel that it's disingenuous the way it's put there because it only refers to essentially a part of the whole thing.
Okay, well, clearly.
Asking, you know, that's that's an area that I I I'm I'm not going to change it. It's all right, but obviously I'm not going to change it, but. I I feel uncomfortable with that. I don't think we're being straightforward with the residents.
So Dick.
We had this discussion. I was just gonna say, we had this discussion again and we ended up putting in the word projected.
Projected, that's what I was gonna say.
Um, so is there anything else that you would add? To to modify this so that it says what you think it should say and we can discuss that. It's just that we've talked about this a couple of times. Last we left it, we just added the word projected. So I'm I'm a little surprised that you're still uncomfortable. Because I thought that made you more comfortable saying it was estimated that we would. But we're a further evaluation is going to be made before buying any kind of car. So if you have something very specific you'd like to put in here, you can certainly share it with the group. It's just we're getting a general statement of I'm not comfortable and we can't really react to that.
Well, let let me tell you what I'm. Uncomfortable with at a at a high level. And that is that we imply that there is a savings there. And we we say how it is and it's official, but yes, the maintenance based on some numbers of. Oil changes, for example, made it that it is less maintenance based on that. And protection, projections, because we may not, there may be some maintenance that we didn't expect that we wind up getting. But putting.
But that would be picked up within maintenance costs.
It's 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 a, it's a uh. It's economically better. I disagree with. I don't believe that we have something that's economically better, maybe in that one category of oil changes, so to speak, with times that it goes to the. The uh, shop for oil changes, yes, but. I think it's disingenuous to say.
Dick, if anyone, if anyone asks a question, Dick, I mean, we we bought the car in, was it August? I forget, was it July?
We got it in August, yeah.
Yeah, August. If anyone asks a question, you know, we're going to have full analytics on this in another three or four months.
Maybe did get it in July. I'm sorry. Neil's right on. He can correct it, but in order of magnitude, that's when we got it. Yes.
Well, regardless, we need a year's worth of data and to Marshall's point, we're not. You know, this isn't about debating the merits of combustion versus E. Uh, we're just letting the town know that we need to have this ready to go. So I I. Maybe a lot of that language is superfluous. Um, and maybe we could simplify the section altogether. I I my recollection was also that you wanted projected in there. Um, but if, you know, I don't I don't know how people feel at 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 version five, if you want to, if you want to. Swat this down a little bit more or not. Um, because no, we shouldn't be misleading in the language. I don't read this as misleading in any way, but. If you have a concern about it, you know.
And that's the part I don't understand because it is factually correct to say that. We were presented with a projection that showed savings. That is disingenuous. That is factually correct. That's what was put in front of us. A projection showed savings.
And that's what we voted on and, you know, we've we've got, we've got another four months to figure out how did the first year go.
And by the way, I want to be clear on on what I said before. I am in no way suggesting that people shouldn't debate combustion versus EV. I am happy to take on that debate one hundred percent. It's just that this article doesn't do that. And that's where I think we're we're likely to have a lot of superfluous debate that really has nothing to do with what the article is about.
And I would say to anyone who raises it at town meeting, it's premature. We do not have a full year's data. So we are not ready to have that discussion. It's still being gathered and analyzed. And when we do have it, we're happy to talk to anybody. About the analysis.
I mean, we have done, if if nothing is part of our, uh, one of our board goals is better communication and I am here to guarantee that. You know, should this be approved and should we get to the point where the chief is coming to us with? You know, a a, you know, a a car that he wants to purchase, then we'll make sure people know that that's coming up in a meeting. And we'll make sure people have their opportunity to be heard, uh, whether via statement or question. It's just that we're not there yet.
And Dick, I don't know if this would help at all, but the last sentence in there, it says the decision on whether to purchase another electric vehicle. We could add in there and whether projected savings were realized. Will not be able to make blah, 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 you know, to state. We still do not know if what was projected actually occurred. That's part of this evaluation.
Just to be fair with people, well. So you can say, you can make justification for why we bought the last one. And to say that as a result of additional electric vehicles. A financial analysis showing projected savings of fuel and maintenance costs for the electric vehicle compared to traditional engines. In a fully powered car. So we we indicate that that's something that we did. Uh, I have a suspicion that at a minimum, we know a hell of a lot more and the chief is on now. About how much, how many essentially miles per kilowatt he's getting and it's going to be a whole lot less. Than was used in the original analysis.
It may be.
I don't think we debate that now. We're not debating that now.
That will be looked at, but that's not what this article is about.
Perhaps instead of trying to justify what we did in the past, we should be talking about the future. And that's what this article is about. And I see it as one where we're trying to justify having gotten the 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 Mustang last year. As having been a financial analysis, which was projection. Okay, fine. But that had nothing to do with, and the point was, you say, Marshall, with what this is about. This is about getting another one. So what is our, where are we now in getting another one? And it kind of indicates at the bottom that we don't know. So instead of trying to explain that we that not we think we have projected and therefore imply that we've projected that this is still a better deal. Financially, I think that's dangerous, but that's it's up to, it's a board decision and we make decisions from that point, not mine.
I I like, Dick, I like simplification. I mean, the beginning with the twenty twenty model year on down is is not needed.
I agree.
It it, it's rationale for.
I agree.
Yeah, I think it'd make it a lot easier on other people. Look, everyone in town knows we've got one e-vehicle. It's it's, okay, well, if they do it.
You know, the 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 reason I like it is that we have a full um combustion engine fleet. And last year we said we have a new standard and it is the Ford Explorer SUV. And then now we have an electric vehicle hanging out there and we're saying we're buying another car with no information about that car. The question is probably going to arise, are you buying another EV or are you buying a combustion? So this is addressing it right now.
And and I would say that this, and and I believe, Mr. Gay, you made this point last time we discussed this, this is consistent. In general form to what we had in the past when we said the typical vehicle that we bought, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I would further argue that while I am a hundred percent in favor of uh, the economy of words whenever possible. I also believe in something like this. It leaves us, if if we slashed it all. Now they're all, that's, I'm, I could be somebody who says, oh, well, now you're not talking about the EV. Are you hiding? Are you running away from that? You, why do you not even mention that? Last year you mentioned the Ford Explorer. This year you won't even mention that you bought. Why? Is it such a failure? And and that lack of information, I think, leaves us. Far more open to people interpret interpreting one thing than what this does.
I think that's legitimate. So what if we said something to the, something like, um. My eyes are just going, uh. Are, you know, the standard police cruiser for the Topsfield Police Department has been a Ford Explorer SUV. We have expanded our fleet to include a Ford Mustang EV. So then we're not, we're not hiding. And and by the way, I'm not hiding from this. I love this, but that's not the point. I think that, you know, if we just make it clear that we have, and and people can infer, okay, well, we're 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 current. We are, we are evaluating. I don't think they need more than that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem saying that because we're addressing the fact that we do have gas, we added an EV. We're purchasing another. I think the question will come up, well, what are you going to do? So it will be raised most likely. You know, which I have no problem with, but I don't think we should just ignore it completely because. At Marshall's point, it looks like, well, that's kind of odd. Every year we've said what the standard is and what we're buying and then suddenly we go silent.
I agree.
Yeah.
So, um. I I think, I think we need to be prepared to discuss this at town meeting. Because I can tell you, I have had a conversation with one individual that fully intends to get to the microphone. And talk about the fact that we don't need to do this. So.
Do what?
Buy an electric vehicle.
To which, again, I will happily point out, this article doesn't contemplate that.
I understand that, but he he thinks it does and he's got the microphone to talk about it.
Yeah, Kevin, do you have enough from what we've just said or could Cam send you over his suggestion? Because it looks like that probably is a good blend for what we're saying.
Yeah.
Um. I I think because this is such a, this is my two cents. I think because. For whatever reason, I I we've got a few months under our belt. The guys love it. Operationally, it works. We are saving money. I think that the community, that aside. The community, to me, this article was very strategic in how it was crafted, how it was worded. And there's a lot of conversation around it because we've had had media coverage on it. And we do know there's people, this community is, I know Mr. Jackson said someone's going to speak to it. I know someone has already indicated they'll probably going to speak to it. And we'll be ready to speak to it. We'll stand, we stand by this. We've only have a handful of months of looking at data. And it, just like the last line of this says, and just like we've committed to the board and to anybody who asked the question to us. We aren't committed to buying another one until it proves its worth. So I I, we always talk about transparency and because there's so much behind this particular one, we've spent, you know. A lot of time on it and that's okay. Um. For what it's worth. I think in this particular item, the more we can get. Our mind, provide at least the information that got us to this language, I think was really thoughtful and to kind of pare it down in any way. Makes me nervous that someone's going to not, they could, this, they can read and understand. They can challenge us now on this. They could say. Your data's wrong, Kev. We don't believe that your analysis was correct. And then we can actually have that debate, but I I. And then we can actually have that debate. But I, I, I feel like if we don't include, I like the language, I guess is what I'm getting at. If we don't include it, I'm, I'm concerned it's going to create more conversation and not be as transparent as we, we try to be as, as an organization. That's my two cents. You can send me whatever language now you'd like and I'll make the updates.
Any other thoughts on this? All right. What, I, what I would suggest is, Cam, if you can kind of crunch that a little bit. And if we put both in, we'll be able to see what they both look like and we'll make a decision the next time.
Okay, I think that's completely reasonable. Yeah.
Nice.
Okay, uh, any other, um, points on the ATM? Okay, let's migrate over then to the STM.
The coyotes are talking off in the distance.
Boy, they have been crazy.
At first I thought it was kids, but I'm like, no, 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 that's, that's coming from over there. That's, that's them coyotes.
Playing with kids. What's, which?
This is, uh, what, what version are we here?
Yeah.
Version two, no.
2.01.
2.01. It's the third one over on the top line.
2.01. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, there it is. Yeah.
Okay, so the, the first couple are all standard, nothing has been added to them. So I guess the one to discuss is Article Four. Is that the only one, Kevin, that really has some verbiage here? We started to discuss it when it was in the ATM. Um, I, I have one suggestion on, on the wording. Um, in the first italicized paragraph, when it says the master plan addresses its future through recommendations of core principles, which include, and then it lists them. I would change that because a core principle isn't, um, housing per se. That's not a core principle. You have core principles about each of these areas. So, um, the suggestion to say the master plan addresses its future through recommendations regarding land use, housing, economic development, et cetera. Or you could keep recommendations of core principles regarding either one.
Principles is wrong. You're correct.
It didn't seem to, it'd be right. It's just that recommendations regarding land use, housing, economic development.
Or, or recommendations specific to.
You could do that too. Yep. It was just that those things are not core principles.
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm reading off the same song sheet. So on, um, 2.01, the first line reads in the current version that I'm looking at, a master plan is a community's general blueprint for the future, guiding regulatory changes, land use policies, budgeting decisions, and the rest of the community decision making. Yep. Go down two sentences.
That's not the sentence. Keep going.
The master plan addresses. Okay, the, the master plan addresses future, its future through recommendations of core principles. Okay, now I'm caught up. Thank you.
I, I, my overall take on this is, this is far too much text. It's never been the intent of the explanation. We can change it if we want. But the intent has always been to just describe somewhat in layman's language what's going on here. And the main thing that's going on here is that we've received a grant of $100,000 for a master plan and we believe that we want, uh, need more, want more to, to have a, a complete, um, effort in the master plan. I mean, that's, that's essentially what the message should be. Trying to explain what the master plan is and who the person's doing. That's not what, it's not typically what we want to do in the explanation. Maybe some, some small thing about the, the consultant analyzes. I think it's crazy to do that in this explanation and it really takes away from the overall attitude of what we've done in the past with explain. That's my take.
Would you want to take a stab at it in condensing it?
Uh, how about if I work with Cam? He seems to be more of a reducing text.
I like reducing text.
I'd be glad to work with somebody.
Cam, do you want to work with Dick?
That's fine. Yeah, whatever. No, it's fine.
Okay. And then send something over to Kevin when you guys have a draft.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments on the STM? Okay, hearing none. Then Cam and Dick will send over some verbiage, Kevin, and we'll have, um, if those can get over as well by the 21st, then for our 23rd meeting, we can. Okay. We can review this, put this on the agenda. Does that sound okay, Kevin?
That'd be great.
Well, information over to Kevin by the 21st. And we have a working session on the 23rd.
Okay.
I'm not sure if, I don't want to just crunch it too much on everybody.
How, how full is the calendar on the 21st?
There's three things right now, but we're looking to make that a short meeting to jump over to FinCom.
Right, FinCom. Yep.
So if, if, just to recap, on the STM, whatever language on the, uh, master plan, again, if you could have it to me early Monday at the latest, that'd be fantastic. Thank you. Um, and I'll incorporate that in the next version I send out, um, by, by Tuesday before the next meeting. Um, and then on the ATM, um, I'm going to go back, Mr. Gant, on your edits you sent me last night and just quality control check what I put into the 501. Um, and I'll get that if it's all right before we send versions back and forth again. Because you've already sent me those edits. I can send that to just you. You, if you want to put eyes on it and make sure I didn't miss anything, um, that would be great. And then I think it sounds like on the article, Cam, for the police cruiser, you'll send something over on that that I'll put as an op, in a note section as an option to, to, to plug and play. Did I, does that cover it? I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I keep hearing my own voice and it's annoying me. I'm sorry.
It's not doubling over here.
Do it a little bit.
You sound, you sound fine. Okay, um, is there anything else that we did not cover? Otherwise, we're ready for a motion to adjourn. All right. Can I have a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez is aye, so it passes unanimously.